At this time, I'd like to call Thursday, December the 5th, 2019. Special meeting, public work session to order. And at this time, would you please stand for a moment of silence and afterward, Ms. Allen will pledge allegiance. Amen. Ms. Allen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, Ms. Allen, would you read your mission statement for us, please?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, Madam Clerk, attendance, please.
Ms. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Mrs. Schumake?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Parent?
Present.
Eight members present, one member absent.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is roll call vote. Consideration of the agenda for December 5th. You've had a copy of that agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Allen made a motion and Mr. Lamb seconded the motion. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams? Yes. Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right. At this time, I'll ask Williams if you will call us into closed meeting, please.
I move that the board ends to a closed meeting on the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes: One, consideration of student disciplinary matters as permitted under subsection 8.2; and consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection 8.1.
Motion's been read. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Allen seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
We are now in closed session. Closed meeting. And the next item on the agenda is 3.2, which is a roll call vote. Consideration of expulsion case number 2019-01. The recommendation is expulsion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Allen and seconded by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
The next item is 3.3, consideration of expulsion case number 2019-20/02. The recommendation is expulsion. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Hines made a motion and Mr. Lamb seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. The recommendation is expulsion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, one no, it passes.
One question, Dr. Bracy. When you, when the board members are looking at power school and you're seeing attendance, I think our concern is what? If the attendance officers are not going out and after 10 days and letters aren't being sent and things aren't being done to hold parents responsible, then there is a big concern. Attendance officers have got to, they've got to do that. Either they're doing their job or they're not doing the job. And if they're not doing the job, then, you know, as one board member put it, just take them out of the budget and be done with it. I mean, you either, we fought for them and if they're not going to go out and do their job, then we don't need them. Attendance officers need to be out finding out why these kids are missing all these days. And we're not taking anybody to court after the 15 days.
And that's brief, basically.
And, I mean, you know, come on. We're dumping that on you so that you can help the people who are responsible to make sure that that, it gets done.
Correct, board members?
Correct.
Yes, Ms. Allen.
What I'd like to see is the attendance numbers, where our attendance numbers stand now, number one. Several meetings ago, I asked what was our plan in regards to what are the steps that happen? After a certain amount of time, someone goes out. Then after a certain amount of time, we go to court. What is the plan, and number one? And then number two, how is that plan communicated to the parent? Because we, you know, if this is something that we've always supposed to have done and we haven't done and now we're doing it, we should do our due diligence to make sure that we're educating people. We're really doing it now. But if we're not doing it, we can't hit and miss do it. We've made this investment. And, you know, if we lose any accreditation due to some attendance issues, that's going to be a problem.
We did, no.
Well, I'm just saying. That, I mean, moving forward, we've made that investment this go around. So this year, this shouldn't be an issue. We've given, as a board, we've given what has been requested so that we don't have this issue. At this moment, I don't speak for anybody else. I don't personally know what the plan is, what, how it's supposed to go. I can't even communicate it to anybody else because it hasn't been communicated to me. So...
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, and I hope that, and I hope the plan isn't what was introduced with regards to, that we were going to send out the letters. I mean, technically, you, I guess standard practice or best practice, whatever you want to call it, is that you send home a letter at the 10-day. But then we were there for a while, sending home letters at 1, 3, 5, and then maybe something like a 7, 10, and then a 15. But we were putting that on the backs of teachers for that to be sent out. I hope that that wasn't the plan to address the attendance issue. Because, I mean, as my colleagues have said here, I mean, when this was shown or presented, you know, that was the bulk of it and then it was put on the teachers' laps with this. And, you know, there was no cohesiveness of where this, where this is all going.
Right. Okay. Okay? Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is of...
Chairman, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
I had a question as far as the attendance. And I think in the past, it was the practice that they did not take the parents to court or whatever. Well, I mean, is that, because this is what some of you all were saying, right?
They're supposed to.
That's what was...
The law says they're supposed to.
Right. So, what, I mean, if it's going to be the same business as usual, then that, I guess we've got to put some weight or something behind it. Otherwise, we're going to have the same situation.
Well, what the problem has been with the cases that have made it to court, they were sent back to school. There wasn't any action that would take place there. And when we met with the city last year, we had a task force on attendance. You know, we had behavior services in the room. We had the sheriff's department, police department. And we had this discussion about what each person's role is in that process. And at that point, we didn't have the judicial branch at the meeting. Because if everybody's performing what they, what they do when they get, when they get to court, historically, they've been sent back. They wouldn't prosecute them for tardiness, not coming to school. They would send them back. Cycle would start over again. So, I mean, I'll pull the, I'll pull our report and share that with you. But we can also show steps that we take. But we can take it so far.
Oh, yeah.
But we can't make any action come from, we can't.
But I think we need to hear that we're taking it as far as we can.
That we're doing our part. Right.
And if they send it back, it's a, because I've heard that excuse, I guess, since I've been on the board, that we would send it and they send it back. So I think they stopped even trying or something. Or maybe have a meeting with the judicial, judicial branch and explain to them what we're up against. It's not that we want anyone to go to court, but we're trying to save these kids. And parents got to be held responsible at some point. That's my thing. And sometimes, as we've seen, the kids are really, seem like they're raising themselves, doing the best they can.
Hines, Lamb, and Atkinson.
What I want, I want to, and thank you, and I know all three of us had our hands up, but I wanted to piggyback with what Board Member Williams was saying because the court can mandate certain things that we can't. And in cases where we've seen trauma or anger management or just not choosing the right behavior, the judge may be able to put them in touch with different resources that we can't do because of our limitations as far as being able to mandate. So I don't know if maybe there's a discussion to be had with the head judge that is down there. I don't know if there's a discussion to be had with the judicial branch on their own so that we can share some concerns and what we see and what's needed and see if they can help us and how they can help us. But I think putting them in front of judges where they can mandate different things may be of benefit to the student where it may not benefit us in the long run. But in the long run, we're here for the betterment of our students.
Right. Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, just two quick points with it. One is more of a question. And again, I'm premising my comments. If I miss something, then please, you know, fill me in. The first one was, you said that there was a task force that was formed and you had a discussion over this. But the judicial side of it was not there. My question is, why weren't they there? I would think that that would have probably been...
They didn't show up.
Do we know why?
No, this, I don't know why.
You don't ask judges why they're not showing up.
You don't do that.
What's that?
Ask judges why they're not showing up.
Okay.
I would not think you would.
Well, maybe that's, maybe that's the protocol and maybe you don't ask judges and so forth. But I'm not asking for a judge to show up. I'm asking for a representative of the judicial side to come here. Bottom line is, bottom line is, this is serious.
That's who you want, though. You want a judge.
Well, I want someone at the table.
They make the final decision.
I want someone at the table.
They can't, no one else can beat for a judge but a judge.
I understand that. And I'm not, I'm not forcing anyone. I would think that this is an important enough topic that everyone would want to be on board. Any other, any other location or so forth that has had these issues, that has formed task forces and so forth, everyone is on board and making an effort at this. That's it. And then the last one, unless, again, unless I missed something, I would, I mean, I would love to know more so what was discussed and solutions at that task force. What, what came up?
Mr. Meakin?
Well, I was just going to say, I am happy to volunteer to do a reach out to, is it Chief Judge?
Mr. Chief.
He's the Chief, Doug Ottinger of the Portsmouth General District Court. Now, we probably really need to be in the J and D Court. But I am happy to reach out. I know him personally. You know him personally. His wife worked for my firm for a long time. I think we can at least get some feedback as to what we can do to get some proactive involvement from the judicial side of this. And I'm glad to do that and try to report it to you if not at the next board meeting, maybe the first meeting in January or something like that. But I think we can get you some, some sense of what the judicial branch sees as this issue and how they plan to deal with it.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Atkinson?
I guess, I guess at this point, with the situation as far as attendance, Dr. Bracy, me, and I'm speaking for myself as a board member, is fed up with the, with the parents, with attendance and not taking it serious. So we have to, like, put our foot down as far as parental accountability. If we got to flood the court system with 500 summons just to show the judicial branch that we're serious about this, then that's what needs to be done. And my expectation, being that we have so many absenteeism and tardies in the schools, is that by January, February, we do have 500 summons in the court at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is roll call vote. It's consideration to change the time of the annual reorganization meeting. You know, it starts at 5:30 to 6:15 on January the 9th. Dinner would be at 5:45. This comes as a request from Ms. Hines, who has a required attendance in her school division. And I said that I would bring it before the board. And so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I gave as much notice as I could. But when the email comes that this is mandatory, my first thought is, okay, let me check the calendar. Oh, crap. And my next email was to Mr. Parent. So I'm sorry it's out of my hands, but thank you for being flexible.
Okay.
No problem.
Hearing no more discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Next item is discussion, the 2020-21 instructional calendar and start time study results. Dr. Kamardi.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kamardi.
So we're going to have a movie here, huh?
I'll start with a survey. We received almost 1,200 responses to a survey that we put out to gauge interest to a pre-Labor Day start. Of those almost 1,200 surveys, 44% were representing parents, 52% our employees, 3% community stakeholders, and 1% students. This is in your packet, but I would like to talk about some of the glaring findings. The general question, are you in favor of starting the school year before Labor Day? 36% of nearly 1,200 respondents replied that they would be interested in a pre-Labor Day start. 64% responded that they would not be interested in a pre-Labor Day start.
Saw that somewhere.
That was fairly compelling. We'll skip a couple. Question four, are you satisfied with the current start time? And we had Mrs. Nolasco add this question to get at the heart of how far we need to go or talk about going down the rabbit hole of earlier starts or later starts for older students. If you've been watching Virginia Beach, they've been going round and round on this and changing positions for the better part of two years. So this question was, are you satisfied with the current school start time schedule for Portsmouth Public Schools? Whereas high schools begin at 7:20, middle schools at 8 o'clock, and elementary students begin at 8:35 for B schedule and 9 o'clock. 67% of nearly 1,200 respondents responded that they were satisfied with our current schedule. 33% said that they were dissatisfied with our current schedule. Would you want school administration to research changing the school's start times? Not the pre-Labor Day, but the clock hour on the day, where middle school and high school students start the day later and end the day later? 39% said that they would not want us to engage research into that. I'm sorry, 61% said that they would not want us to engage that research. 39% said that they would want us to engage that research. So I think the numbers are fairly compelling based on the survey responses that we got.
Ms. Atkinson?
Dr. Kamardi, thank you for that. So is it clear that we're not going to spend money on a study for this project?
I gave you all the numbers. That's your all's decision.
I think the survey speaks for itself.
Okay.
You had, you had parents, you had employees. It's pretty overwhelming. All right.
So that, that really now takes us to the proposed calendar for 2021. As you all know, the history in Portsmouth has been that we adopt the calendar two years at a time. Last year, we did not because we were waiting to see what happened with the pre-Labor Day start.
Right.
It seems the consensus that that's an unsavory option. So now I'll come back and propose the 2021 calendar. It's been updated as recent as 3:45 this afternoon. So I'll ask that you refer to the most recent one in Board Docs. I'm very proud to say that I found a day. So we do now have 180-day flush calendar, which is good. And it's now in Board Docs for you to review. But on the screen, I have something that I think should interest you. It's a comparison of how our calendar stacks up with the calendar in our region, calendars in our region. As you can see, Norfolk has 180 days, as do we. Virginia Beach has 181. Suffolk will have either 181 or 180 as they put forth two calendars. And Chesapeake has a 180-day calendar with two options on certain days out. There are some anomalies that are specific to Portsmouth that I just highlight to bring to your attention. I'm in no way suggesting that we change any of these things, but rather showing how we may lose a day where other places are in session. Surprisingly, we are the only school division that is out of school on Veterans Day. Everybody else who participates in these meetings, they actually are in session on Veterans Day. We are one of two school divisions that uses our schools as polling places. And when that happens, we have to be closed on Election Day. Chesapeake has gone to, they've moved their polling places out of schools so that schools can still be in session that day. That's just on the table for thought. In December, a priority of staff was that we have two full weeks at winter break. And we work hard to get those two full weeks in. A challenge of this calendar is we start as late as we possibly can next year, September the 8th. That's the latest you can possibly start a school year in a post-Labor Day schedule. So when you start late, it presents challenges because people still want to be out mid-June. It presents some challenges. But we were able to find the days. And this calendar does represent the priority of faculty to have two staff, to have two full weeks at winter break. Another anomaly is that we wanted to acknowledge the board's priority of giving our teachers a workday every quarter as best we can. So we do that. And our workday for that year will actually be February the 1st. So our kids will be out of school February the 1st for that workday between semester changes. And they'll also be out two weeks later on the 15th for President's Day. So this is a good faith calendar that we are promoting. We are very proud that it does represent 180 days as opposed to 179. However, I will note that if we had put forth the 179, we still would have been fine in terms of hours. We're never going to be in a situation where we don't have 990 clock hours for our elementary students, 140 clock hours per course for our secondary students. We will still hope that we can continue the extended day that we have now because 180 days is 180. It doesn't accommodate inclement weather. So the extra minutes is how we pad to accommodate for inclement weather. You may recall during the summer, I presented a graphic that showed you with just the 10-minute extension that we're going to. We actually got the recesses in elementary schools to 30 minutes. And then we banked time so that we could have actually eight days banked just with those minutes over the course of the school year. So unless we miss nine days, and we've already missed two for a non-event, hopefully, we won't get more than seven days of snow this winter.
Yeah, but usually, isn't it usually after five, you're kind of given some grace and forgiveness from VDOE?
Yes, you are. You have to, you have to request it.
Have to request it.
Yeah, but usually, yeah.
Very good.
So I put forth this calendar tonight for discussion. And hopefully, if there are no questions, we can move it forward. Yes, ma'am.
So...
Go ahead.
Sorry, Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I acknowledge.
Not a problem at all. Three more.
Is that old teacher coming out?
Run into it.
Dr. Parton, the days in red are the days that, just to be clear, that we're out of school.
The days in, I'm sorry, I should have clarified that. The days in red are the number of instructional days we have for that month. So they're the number of days that we're actually in session for that month.
Okay, so I see, so we are not out of school on Columbus Day?
We are not. And we have not been traditionally.
Right.
All right. Now, Ms. Harlan.
I'm going to throw a curveball because that's who I am. If we are the only ones out for Veterans Day, I would be interested to see what the response would be is to moving the day off from Veterans Day to making it a full day off on Wednesday before Thanksgiving to give everybody a three-day break at Thanksgiving.
So.
And I'm going to say so too.
So.
Because that's me.
We tried this years ago. Because we're Portsmouth. And it was a backlash that you do not want to go through on Veterans Day. I'm just, it's Veterans Day. You don't want to go down, this board does not want to go down this road in Portsmouth.
And the parent who was on the committee was a military parent.
Okay.
And I gingerly made a similar suggestion.
Tested the waters?
Tested the waters with a tow.
Okay.
It was not, I realized quickly, we don't want to do that.
We have quite a few military families. That we have quite a few military families that, you know, are victory and that they moved into that area.
And I'm a veteran. Right.
I think our challenge is you can't do it and take it back.
No.
I think that the other places have never really been in the habit of doing it.
Gotcha.
So now that we're doing it, it would be extremely difficult to take it back.
Ms. Parton?
I was going to say, is there any way we could find a day to give that day off before Thanksgiving?
If you wish to have me propose a 179-day calendar, we could, that could happen.
But don't we do an early release on?
We do. We do a 1 o'clock release, latest release.
A half a day changed to a whole day?
But it's a half a day.
It's a half a day.
I think the city does a half.
The city does a half. We do an early release. So our latest tier of schools dismisses that.
You've got to go to at least 11 o'clock, right?
Yes, 10:55.
You've got to feed them lunch, yes. And one other thing, as I'm looking at the teacher workdays, I do appreciate the teacher workdays, especially that early release in March where it is the Bataan Death March.
Yep.
And I think we all know that sitting in this room, you see a lot of discipline cases come in the spring. And it's because we just get tired of each other. I mean, that's just the nature of human beings. So I want to thank you for that work, you know, that at least half a day that's in there. That's, you know, some relief to the Portsmouth school families that we have.
Ms. Toye?
Yes. And again, overall, you put a lot of work into it, obviously. You know, my question or to throw out there as well, as I've heard from some teachers and so forth, that on the teacher workdays, if we can do our very best to have them be a true, a real teacher workday, not necessarily a teacher workday on paper, and then somewhere or some way, we throw in a professional development activity or something. But allow for it to be, you know, a full-blown teacher workday for, well, for paperwork and everything else.
Unencumbered teacher workday.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
So.
Go. I'm not touching it.
Open up the floor to you.
So nobody asked. But I also know that that October conference day is of high value. And this year, it was able to be a day where students were not in school. For this calendar, that was an impossibility. So it's a half day. So the conferences can be in the afternoon once we get kids.
And that's good.
Get kids out. The challenge of this is times are constant. It is what it is.
Yeah.
And you just have to work with the days.
Right.
So this is our best good faith effort to put forth a 180-day calendar.
You've done a very good job.
Do you all share that with me?
Thank you.
Nice.
All right, the next item on the agenda is consideration of a special transaction report. You have reviewed that.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Atkinson made the motion. Mrs. Williams seconded it. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll a call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
No.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Five yes votes, three no.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is discussion of the December 12th. You've had a, we've had the calendar. If there will be any changes, just email me and we can take care of that. Make any changes for the 12th. This will be our last meeting for the new year. The next item on the agenda is, and I'm going to, I'm going to start it. And I'm going to try to be as professional as I can be. Today was to be a meeting with the members of the liaison, which happens to be Mr. Nathan Clark, Councilman Clark, and Councilwoman Lisa Lukasberg. At, now realizing that Reverend Patello and I and the staff were in the conference room at 2:55. The meeting was to start at 3:00. We were hand-delivered, in fact, I think Ms. Patterson brought a letter as we were sitting there because Mr. Reverend Patello left his job in Virginia Beach and I left my job in Norfolk. And I'm going to read this letter to you. This was at 2:55. The meeting was at 3:00. "To the extent that the school board liaisons appear to be unilaterally altering the previously approved agenda, meeting logistics and attendees without discussion with the city council liaison, it may be best to postpone this meeting until all liaisons have an opportunity to talk directly among themselves and report back to their respective boards. Our next scheduled meeting is January the 6th, 2019. I advise city council liaisons that they may hear from their counterparts over the coming days. However, the city council liaisons will not attend the December meeting this afternoon until certain matters are clarified amongst the liaisons." Now, I have a copy of the agenda. At no time did we alter the agenda. All we did was recommend that we add to the agenda for the liaisons because we were asking them if we could add. Oh, Scott, where are you going?
I have an 8:30 meeting tomorrow morning in Loudoun County.
Oh, no, no. Well, thank you for everything.
Appreciate the opportunity that was offered to me here in Portsmouth. And I will continue to be one of Portsmouth's biggest cheerleaders.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Good luck to you. Anyway, the only item that we added to the agenda was the discussion of the risk management of reappropriation. We had on the agenda school capacity rezoning, E for Education, and School Funding Formula. That was the agenda. That was the agenda. We were going to ask the liaisons to add to them. I think it was taken out of context that we, Reverend Patello and myself, we changed the agenda and we did, because you asked that we have the minutes of the meeting. I had Mrs., I had Mrs.,
Chamus?
Excuse me. Ms. Chamus to come in and record the minutes. Well, obviously, that was not, that was not good because the bottom line is that evidently, there's not any trust here. I mean, why should we have somebody to record the minutes? And of course, you know, talking with Dr. Bracy, and I've been talking about this all week. Bottom line is, Dr. Patton, you can bring whatever you want. They have to understand that this is not Dr. Patton's meeting, nor is it Dr. Bracy's meeting. It is the liaisons' meeting. We set the agenda. She comes in with the agenda, and it's our agenda. And the bottom line is that we, you know, we have other things that we wanted to talk about. One of the things that we wanted to talk about, and I'm going to let Mr. Falk go through this with you because it's this whole thing with risk management is a, anyway. But the bottom line is that we didn't even get that, we didn't even get the opportunity because Dr. Patton called the two liaisons and canceled the meeting. He said, "We had changed the agenda and therefore, we could not discuss the reappropriation of the risk management, I mean, the risk management fund." Which, that's not true. I mean, we wanted to add it because we needed to talk about it. It needs to be discussed. But she canceled the meeting while we were sitting there. And at this time, I'm going to let, do you want to go?
Let me, yeah.
Set the stage?
Yes.
With all the emails?
Well, as Mr. Parent has mentioned, we were scheduled to have a meeting this afternoon with the liaisons from the city and the school board. But Mr. Parent and I were talking. And at the beginning of, when the liaison started, that you all came up with 16 items that
Right.
you would discuss.
Correct.
So they've been going down the list of those items at the meetings. So there were four that were on tap for today.
Right.
But in addition to that, Mr. Parent, Reverend Patello, we wanted to add the risk management appropriation for discussion, which is the purpose of liaisons, to discuss pertinent issues that one board may have or to clarify any misconceptions. So we, I sent an email to Dr. Patton advising her that we would like to discuss that and also informing her, as he mentioned, that our board would like to have minutes from these meetings. So she then responded to say that, as noted in the last education liaison meeting, the topics for discussion are determined, that was the school capacity rezoning, E for Education, School Funding Formula. She was not, she did not want to amend the agenda to have the discussion at all regarding the risk management reappropriation, for whatever reason. So that upset Reverend Patello and Mr. Parent. But to the point where they were ready to just say, well, we're not going to discuss it, we're not going to meet. But that would have been too easy. So I said, "Let me respond to Dr. Patton and be clear." It's, and I asked her, I said in the email, "Are you saying that you and city council, the city council liaisons are not willing to amend the agenda, to hear the risk management or allow us the opportunity to discuss it?" I didn't get a reply. She read it twice, but I didn't get a response. So around 1 o'clock, I said, I told Lauren, I said, "Well, I haven't heard anything." I said, "So just to be on the safe side, I'll send another email just to let, let her know that the meeting, I'll see you at the meeting at 2 o'clock in the school board conference room." Since she didn't reply, I said, "Well, I'll just see you then." So we get to the meeting, as he mentioned, and then, and then we realize, it's 3:05, meeting starts at 3:00. No one's there. I said, "Well, maybe they thought we were coming upstairs." So I have Susan call upstairs and they, and her administrative assistant said, "Oh, did you not get my letter?" "No, we didn't." So they brought some letters down, left them on the counter, exited. So then we get the letters and we realized, oh, they're not meeting. So that's in a quick synopsis of how we've gotten to this point. It's games that's being played now. I mean, that's the only way that I can, that I can put it out there. I don't understand where all this is coming from. When you all had the discussion with the joint meeting, if the liaisons were born out of that for purposes of having discussions. So just to give you a snapshot of where we are and what we've done to comply, because I want everybody to know that we have complied with everything the city has asked of us. So, Mr. Falk, will you give an overview of a timeline of what we've done thus far?
And before he does, because all of you were copied on the December 3rd letter. I assume that you've got that letter?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Mr. Falk.
Okay, and this is really related to the general fund reappropriation as well as the risk management reappropriation. So I want to make that clear. Back on August 15th, we presented resolutions to the school board for reappropriation of unencumbered and encumbered funds in the general fund and the risk management fund. And at that time, you approved those reappropriation requests. We sent them to the city manager on August 16th, the next day. We didn't hear anything for a number of weeks. On September the 13th, the city manager called a meeting with superintendent herself, staff from both sides, to discuss the reappropriations. From that meeting, a few things came out. One, we could not, they told us, we could not transfer unexpendited funds from the general fund directly to our risk management fund. In order to have those unexpendited funds going to a fund, we would have to transfer that money to the school board risk management fund that was held by the city. That is the $5.1 million that they asked us to send to them last year, and they set up a fund on their side. So it would go to the fund on their side. We could not move from our general fund directly to our risk management fund to cover any overage. And also, they shared with us that we would have to sign that agreement, which that agreement was looked upon and ultimately signed, and I'll get to that later. But basically, all of that had to be done before we could move forward. And we had to rescind the reappropriations,
Right.
which we did later. And any responsibility of that money coming from the, the school board risk management fund held by the city would have to go through the city attorney's office. So, and oh, by the way, you have to give us supporting documentation for all of the information that you have sent us on all of the reappropriations for all, every fund. So from that point of September 13th, up until the time we brought them back to you on October 15th, we worked with city staff, we sent all the documentation. They verified that our documentation was correct. At that point, we brought those resolutions, the revised and the recensions, back to you on October the 10th. You approved those resolutions for reappropriation. We sent them to the city, I believe, the next day. After that happened, we were told, we asked, "What about the CMR?" And they said, "Well, we need to discuss the school board risk management fund that we hold and how you get that money with the city attorney." So at the school board, city council liaison meeting on October 28th, we discussed that. Everybody was in attendance, also myself and Mr. Ashby. It was told to us at that time that I was to work with Mr. Ashby to give him the information requested. And I'll explain what that means. They wanted information on every revenue and every expenditure transaction that made up the FY 1819 Risk Management Fund. So every transaction, all, almost $21 million of transactions, we had to give them documentation. So at that point, after that meeting, my staff went to work and they put this binder together. I met with Mr. Ashby on November the 20th, and I hand-delivered this binder to him with all the information that they requested.
Right.
And at this point, I haven't heard anything back as to whether he's reviewed it or where his review status is. But it was hand-delivered with everything that they asked for on November 20th. And that's where we are at this point.
Now, the crux of the matter is, when you read the December 3rd, and I'm going to, it's the last, actually, it's the last paragraph. And it's, it's of course, signed by the city manager, but I don't think the city, to be honest with you, my bad tonight, I don't think the city manager wrote this letter. I think it was either Ashby or, never mind. But it says, "Based on the request identified in the resolution," and this is the resolution of October, "particularly matters relating to the Risk Management Fund, Mr. Solomon Ashby, city attorney, met with us during October 28th, as he said, at the education liaison meeting." And it was very clear, and Mr. Falk has outlined that, that there were documents that he was going to send monthly documents concerning, you know, the claims, the health claims. And it was, I mean, that was what was agreed upon, and there was no big deal. "We discussed the shortfall as it relates to the school risk management fund, and Mr. Ashby is reviewing the information for Mr. Falk." There's the book. "The reserve currently has $5.1 million." Now, remember, board, we ask for the reappropriation to go to risk management. You understand that part? All right. She's saying, "The reserve currently has $5.1 million. If approved, there is sufficient funding to cover the FY '29 shortfall. Therefore, the request to have $2.909 transferred is not required." And so what we basically are saying is that we know we have the $5.1. We had a shortfall of $2,909,455. The bottom line is, we're asking for that, that money to be, to go into risk management. Now, once they, but then she denied it. So that means they're going to subtract from the $5.1 million, that amount of money, which is going to leave us about $2.1, $2.2 million. Now, next year, if we have, remember, with risk management, you've got your health insurance, you've got your workman's comp, and you've got your general liability insurance. So if you have a bad year with a lot of claims, if you have a bad year with workman's comp, and all we've got is $2.2, we may be, and we need $2.9, we may be $700,000 short. Where are we going to get the money? And as Mr. Falk says, we're not, all we're asking for is really money going out of the $5.1. And Dr. Bracy and his staff have been very conservative in not trying to spend everything so that we, we would have this little cushion that we could put back into risk management to bring it back to $5.1. We're not going to go out and spend it. It's for risk management. Well, that has been denied. So in order for us to, in order for Dr. Patton to put it on the agenda, and we were, I'm just going to say, threatened, that if the money was not transferred today by 3 o'clock, then it would not be on the December 10th agenda. The money was not transferred at 3 o'clock because we had a meeting at 3 o'clock that we wanted to talk about, which they canceled, which Dr. Patton canceled the meeting. So after conferring with our attorney, the bottom line is that we need, in the morning, we need to transfer the $2.9 million back to the city. We're going to ask for it to be reallocated to risk management. There is no guarantee, board members, that that will happen. They do, I mean, once that money goes over, they can do whatever they want with it. But the bottom line is that we wanted to at least have a discussion with the liaisons just so that they understood where we were coming from. And for her to cancel, I mean, she called them individually and told them that we had changed the agenda, which we did not change the agenda. All we were asking for is to add, is to amend the agenda. That's all we were asking.
To add an item.
Add an item. That's all we were asking. Here's the agenda. So she canceled, she called them and told them the meeting was canceled, delivered to us a letter, and there we were sitting, waiting for them to come, and we get the letter.
And we have a timeline of all of that with the letters. You know, she wrote me on the 3rd, I wrote her back on the 4th.
4th, yeah.
And then on the 5th, we get the letter at the 11th hour.
Right.
And I have the email exchange that I had with her, asking her about amending the item. And then, of course, when she didn't respond to the last one. But I want to clear up something and clarify something that Mr. Parent said about the cushion and with our staff being conservative.
Yeah.
What happened, this was as a result of the, some of the vacant positions. You know, if we can find these teachers, we will hire the teachers. But being that, you know, we're in a teacher shortage, not just Portsmouth, accumulate vacancy dollars. I mean, that's a fact. I mean, that's a fact. Now, the conservative piece of that is, we realize that we have $2.9 million that's gonna have to come out of our reserve. So, we have $2.9 that, rather than, now, don't get me wrong, we have plenty of needs. We could have spent the $2.9 on many things that would have been relevant, reasonable, without any question.
Right.
But if we can't depend on you for funding us adequately, when we're in a pinch or a bind, I don't have the trust to think that I can go to you and tell you, "I need money", when we don't have any. So, that being the case, we're gonna look out for ourselves and try to maintain the $5.1 that we have in the reserve. All we wanted to do was to put this back into the reserve. We can't use it for anything else.
Right.
Can I add one thing?
Yes, please.
The rubber meets the road here, this, because when we talk about timing, and I mentioned this to you, I think, a couple meetings ago, this has an audit implication for us. Normally, audits are completed in the state of Virginia, and they have to be completed by November, November the 30th, which obviously, we could not do that. But it wasn't, it wasn't because we didn't do what we needed to do with our auditors. Our auditors have validated that we're done, we have done everything we needed to do, we would be ready to issue if this issue with the city was resolved. And so, what is happening is, we're delayed on our audit in the same way they are, because this issue is resolved, and that's not their only issue. To be honest with you, they, their CFO and assistant CFO left within the last month and a half to two months. So, they have interim CFO.
He's been doing all this with the attorney, not anybody in finance. He's been communicating.
Finance people have been involved in this piece of it.
Oh, that's malfeasance.
Uh-uh. So, but from the audit perspective, we're ready to go, and the auditors have validated that. We are waiting for this issue to be resolved so we can finally finalize our audit.
Isn't, didn't we receive a report from our risk management saying that we needed to keep a, a level fund of $5.1 or something in there, some percentage, because we were wondering if we could take, instead of putting money into risk management, we were trying to find that money to go to somewhere else. And I remember, they were sitting right there, that, "No, you have to have this level to protect you, to cover for X, Y, and Z." And this is their percentage that they maintain. So, the percent, the $5.1 that we maintain is based off the recommendations from the experts that are in the room, which definitely is not anybody sitting around this table with the exception of Mr. Falk, he understands it more than we do. But when they say, "No, you have to leave that money there," I'm gonna trust the people that do this on a daily basis. I just wanted to make sure I understood where that $5.1 came from, because I'm, I remember that conversation vividly. So, for them to tell us that, "Oh, it's okay if you don't have $5.1, you can just pull it out." No, because then we are in harm's way, and you're not gonna, we don't have anywhere to go to get it in case we have a bad year.
Are you saying that Mr., the, the city attorney is telling us what we need to do with this?
Well, and, and the thing with this is, this money's not, the $2.9 is not coming to us.
No.
It will go into the school board risk management fund that's held by the city, and then we would have to do a book of this nature to say, "If we need some, here is our revenues, our expenditures, here's the supporting documentation to support our request out of that fund." So, this $2.9 is not coming back to the school board to use in any way they want to. It's going in the school board risk management fund that the city controls.
And the $2.9 million is to cover the summer months, correct?
Well, the $2.9 is to cover the shortfall in the year, from FY 1819.
Okay, okay. I needed to get my thinking, my category straight.
And if they, by them denying that, then that, when they take that out, and out of the $5.1, that leaves us the $2.2.
Right.
And then we're going, going into a new year, that means if you have another bad year, where are we gonna get the money?
Right.
And then what happens after that?
After that.
Because you will now not have a fund to support your self-insurance program.
Which they were trying to put us in that situation last year, when they took the $5.1, and they were gonna put it in the city operation fund.
Right.
But we caught that, and by the time we got to the meeting to speak on it, the language had changed on their agenda, where they had created, created a reserve fund to be held by the city. So, this isn't the first attempt to take the money that we have, that we have set aside for risk management.
And you remember, they pulled out that evening, a 1983, 73 code.
Forty-four-year-old code.
Yep.
Right.
Pulled that out, said that this is, and we had, it had to be deposited, and it has to go through the city attorney, and da-da-da. So, I bring all of this to you tonight, I mean, my understanding is that maybe some of you have already talked with some city, city council members about this, which is, that's your business. But the bottom line is that we, together, we need to be a team together. It's not that we're trying to do something that is not legal, we're trying to do what is right. And the bottom line, all we're, all we ask for, and you approved it, is to move it over, back, I mean, in the risk management, and then, of course, we gotta, we gotta pay our, we gotta pay our bills. So, it's not really coming to us to do, I mean, we just, we wanna restore it back to $5.1, as you said.
Correct.
That's all. And so, whether or not, now, in the morning, and talking with Mr. Meekins, legally, we need to transfer that money, and that needs to be transferred in the morning. I don't know whether or not it is going to be because they get it tomorrow, or tomorrow afternoon, if they're gonna put it on this, the CMR is gonna be on the agenda for the 10th. I plan to go and speak before city council. It would be a non-agenda item so that I could bring all of this information I'm bringing to you, to the full city council's attention, so that the public will know that the city council or the city manager is placing the school board in a very precarious financial situation, which should not be. And that's the end. Ms. Allen?
DeAndre.
Yes.
Actually, DeAndre.
Oh, DeAndre, I'm sorry, I thought he was holding up the.
I just wanna know, is there something legally, legally, legally that they can do, but it's not transferring the money today? Says they had to be due today?
I'll have to ask Mr. Meekins.
Well, we have not contested, to my knowledge, the fact that, at the end of the year, unencumbered funds revert to the city. The only issue that would be of contest is, is of what date must that money be transferred back to the city? So, it's my opinion, while inventive people can come up with inventive things, that we're not violating any law, we're not denying their right to it, we have been dealing with the request for it to be re-appropriated. The conversation that I had with the city attorney today was, as best I can characterize, it was very, very cordial, I mean, we're not slings and arrows at each other. But the, but the essence of it was that we cannot reappropriate the money until you've given us the money so we can reappropriate it. And that has not been, as I understand it, the practice here, since I've been involved with the school division, they can reappropriate the money by giving us a real appropriation. We don't have to mechanically transfer the money over, mechanically transfer it back. And so, the deadline was given by 3:00 today, and I do not believe that's a violation of any law that I have the knowledge of.
Well, and you can't transfer that money unless we vote on it, so.
Well, I'm sorry, DeAndre.
No, 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 I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, but like you said, if the date was, it should've gone back June 30 or July 1 or July 15 or September 1.
Well, I think we've been working with 120 days post-closing.
There's the, we have our policy, it's 120 days.
But, but what, the position taken, and I'm not vouching for it, the position taken is, by making a request for reappraisal, you should, at that same time, have, you, the board, have authorized the transmission of the money back to the city, because that's why you asked for it to be re-appropriated.
Correct.
Ms. Allen?
First and foremost, we need to address the disrespectful way that our liaisons were treated to that. And while Dr. Patton is the city manager, again, she works at the pleasure of our council, and we keep making it as if it's Dr. Patton, when we need to be holding both of those liaisons responsible for the shoddy treatment that you were given.
Yeah.
Unprofessional is, is the, I, I can't even believe, I actually probably would've driven to both of their jobs and knocked on their doors, because that was just disrespectful, number one. Number two, why is the city manager canceling a meeting between the liaisons? It's not a city manager meeting, it's a liaison meeting.
That's the way I feel.
That in of itself, they need to be held accountable for that, they're not doing what they're supposed to do. And the public needs to be asking them directly at the city council meeting, "Why are you not meeting with your liaisons?" The meeting was set, it wasn't a pop-up meeting, there was an agenda. They could've come to the meeting and said, "We won't discuss this particular piece."
Right.
But to just not show up and have you sitting there is just unacceptable. And both of our liaisons, Councilman Nathan Clark and Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke, need to answer for that. The city manager does not work, they don't work for the city manager.
Right.
They work for, and they work for the public, and the public expects us to be able to have conversations.
Right.
This thing is not good for the city, point-blank period, and they're being complicit in it by playing along.
Well, they were told not to come.
So what?
They don't work for her.
Look, I agree, and I was going to say that, that, I mean, if, if, you know, when we got to the meeting, and I thought we were gonna have the meeting, and the item is on the agenda, if, if they agree, well, let's not discuss it today, if Dr. Patton was going to say to me, Chairman Parent, "We're not gonna discuss that," I was gonna say to Dr. Patton, "I'm gonna tell you bluntly, Dr. Patton, this is not your meeting. This is the liaison's meeting from the city and from the school board. We invite you to come and your staff, as we invite Dr. Bracy and his staff to come." So, the, the purpose of liaisons is for the four people to sit down and have a conversation about the, the needs of both parties so that we all understand.
A council needs to stop hiding behind the city manager. The council needs to stop hiding behind the city manager.
Exactly.
I agree.
She works for them, not the other way around.
That's right.
And every citizen in the city of Portsmouth needs to make sure that they understand that. If we do not do something, we're gonna be in the paper again, come time for budget season, and it does not look well for the city.
Right.
So, every single solitary member of that city council, I hold them responsible for this nonsense, and it's gotta stop.
I agree.
Our liaisons are just hiding behind Dr. Patton, and they're not doing what they need to do. So, at the end of the day, we need to find out, do we need to replace all of those members of council? If they're not willing to do the job that they're supposed to do, then they need to sit down.
We don't, we need to take, we need to vote come 2020.
We, no, forget 2020, we need to be going to, we need to be going to these meetings, every last one of us, we need to dispatch to these civic leagues, because these people don't understand. It is not us that's doing this nonsense, it's them. And until we can all come to the table and be real about it, we are gonna be the laughing stock of the 757, and we're gonna continue to have people say, "Look at what they're doing over there in Portsmouth. We got divisions with rat-saul in the schools and all of that, but we're gonna be the ones, look at them over there, they can't seem to get it together, because our city council and our school board just can't pull it together, because our city council don't understand. We don't listen to him, he listens to us. That's how it's supposed to be."
Right, that's right. Yes, sir. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, did I get it out of turn?
I think it was Ted next.
Ted, I, I called him.
I thought it was you.
Oh, Ted.
Just, just a couple of things for clarification, in case I missed it, but also for it to be that's out here as well. I find it absolutely interesting, this whole conversation about this $2.9 million. From the standpoint of, if you come to me and you're saying you want to take $2.9 million to cover risk management, meaning your insurance and all of those things that comes with it, versus just wanting to take $2.9 million and buy whatever, whatever else, I would think that you're being very shrewd about it. So, I don't understand, I, it, I find it very interesting that they're even questioning something like that. That should be applauded more than anything else. So, then it really comes down to another question. What, you know, they're, they're saying that there's a surplus there, and if this isn't being applauded, then what's the real reason behind you're having an issue with this? That, that's, that's my question for that.
Good question. You know what the answer to that is, and I'm gonna just say it, is that I think the city is in a financial situation, and they're gonna take this $2.9 million, and they're gonna use it for whatever they want to use it. That's my opinion.
Just going to the retirees.
Just a couple of things here.
That is my opinion.
Okay. Second, secondly here, with regards to the agenda, you know.
Yes.
Dr. Patton said that it was changed. Mr. Parent, you said it was amended, for this to be added. My question to that is this, has, I'm sure, in the past, between the liaisons, this has happened before, things have been amended to reflect.
We got, I've got an agenda in my briefcase with 17 items on it.
So, there's no issues with that, or shouldn't be. The other thing that stands out for me, at least, and I'm finding this very interesting, and I would love to get clarification, so besides having the issue that this was an amended agenda, are you telling us also the fact that they had heartburn over minutes being taken?
Yes.
So, you're telling me that an elect, they had issues that they did not want minutes to be taken over the meeting?
Because it signified a lack of trust, but we also, Dr. Bracy also said that Mrs. Deborah White had the, had the right to come from their side and take minutes, but anyway.
It's not an issue of a lack of trust.
Well, that's what they think it is.
Well, in my, in my opinion, it's not an issue of a lack of trust, it's an issue of accountability to the citizens of Portsmouth.
Well, that's what Dr. Patton.
Through, through and through. I find it interesting that you're not talking with an equal, and what I mean by that is, you're not talking with a CFO, CFO, you're talking with an attorney. Attorneys are smart, I'm not knocking anything, I'm just saying that there's no equal conversation here. And if we're gonna talk about something, which no one has mentioned this at the VSBA, you know, I, I set through things, and it talked about trust, and it talked about the two boards, communication, and so forth, we keep talking about the liaisons, this is what I find interesting. And I, it hasn't been brought up, I would hope it's probably crossed a couple of, of my colleagues' minds here, I find it very interesting that members of this board, at times, and myself included in this, will show up to city council meetings even when there's not necessarily an education item on there. I've done that quite a few times. I find it very interesting, though, that liaisons, from that side, very rarely, if maybe, there's many times I can count on one hand, that has shown up to these meetings, be it at the school board meeting or, or to the work session. And what I mean by that is, it's not required, it's not mandatory, it's not required for me to show up either, or anyone else. But I would think part of this whole problem, you talk about communication.
Right.
Here we go, you don't even have to be a liaison to show up. I would just think that that would be part of the, of the issue of, of trying with this. So, I, I'm having some real issues with the fact that they didn't want minutes taken, because we've asked for it, and I would just think that that would be also be wanted on both sides. And the fact that, you know, we're trying to keep ourselves steady with $5.1, which we were told, again, I would just think that that would be something that would be applauded of the fact that you're thinking far enough down here with this. So, I, I'm at, I'm at a loss.
Ms. Allen?
Did you have your hand up?
Okay. Mr. Barnes, Ms. Williams?
I think I did have something to say, but it's been so long. I'm simply gonna say that I agree 100% with Board Member Angela Allen. Dr. Patton works for a city council, and Dr. Patton gets blamed for everything when it has to go back to the members of council. And case in point, the person that runs the show, we all know, is Mr. Rowe. She does whatever. Now, I think the reason she came in and gave them the letter at the last minute, because she got those instructions at the last minute, and she didn't want... And she didn't want to give them time to do anything about it, which was very disrespectful to me. And they want us to work together, and we try.
We do.
And of course, they have upper hand, because they are the appropriating body. So, our hands are tied, and I believe that we can go to every civic league in the city, it's not going to matter, because there's not that many people that go to them anyway. Our thing, and I think if you already read my response to the email, the city is broke. They're using our money for their piggy bank. And the only thing we can do is in 2020, we have to work to change those members up there.
Right.
The majority that has the four, if it's four to three, or whatever, but you got to change the, the dynamics of who's up there. We can talk, we can fuss, but as our attorney has said, we have to give that money back, because that's what the law says. And we're, we're mad about it, we need to speak up about it. I think we need to tell the news reporters.
I was going to say, press conference.
We need to tell, we need a press conference, because we go through this every year.
We've taken care of, we're going to take care of it tonight.
Okay.
We are going to do a press conference.
Not a press conference, but we're working on a, we're working on a...
Because we go through this every year with the city.
And this is, this is live.
The same group for four years, and it's time, it's time for a change. So, I'm asking all the citizens that are watching, if this is being aired throughout the airwaves...
It is, it is.
Please, listen to us. If you care anything about your school system and these children that go there, we have got to make a change in 2020. And we have got to get a new mayor. He has got to go. And we've got to change some of those council people. And I, I will work hard to help make that happen, because without that, we've been doing this for four years.
Yeah, we have.
It's not going to change, unless we change the people. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Barnes, and then Ms. Allen.
I think too, that, I know we said one person runs the show, but there's six other members that's not talking or speaking up for the schools either. So, it's important that...
But they get re-elected.
Right, we say all of them need to, we need to get rid of them.
I know, but, you know, the, nobody is speaking up. Even when there's an issue, everybody, every, every single one of them said they support education.
Right.
But when stuff like this happens, I don't hear neither one of them saying anything.
But do they know about this?
I don't think they do.
They don't even know.
Well, they know now, but I bet you none of them will say anything. And they haven't in the past.
Fair point.
Well, they're going to, they're going to know Tuesday night, because I'm going to speak Tuesday night. I mean, they're going to know what I told you tonight, and I'm going to, I've got five minutes, so I've got to condense what I got to say, but all of them are going to hear it. So, what, what they do with that, you know, it's an election year in 2020, and the citizens of Portsmouth have the right to, to change in it. The only way we're going to, as she said, the only way we're going to get this resolved is that they've got to do, they, we don't come to work every day, we don't come to these board members' meetings trying to think of how we can make City Council's life miserable.
Right.
We're trying to work together, but if, if on their part, they're not willing to work with us, at least have a conversation...
Right.
So that they understand our situation, how in the work can we communicate? Ms. Allen, I'm sorry.
When you speak, well, first of all, they're going to hear all of this before you even get there on Tuesday.
It's live.
Is this live right now, is this live tomorrow, whatever the case may be?
Oh, a couple of them been on my line.
There's a reporter that's listening to us tonight.
Where, where is the reporter?
No, no. She's watching. There's a reporter that's, this is live, this is streamed live. She's listening to this conversation, and there will be a article.
Here's what my, when you speak on Tuesday, you should demand an explanation from our liaisons.
I'm going to...
Because again...
Do that.
They allowed themselves to be put in this situation, and the disrespect, they actually owe you an apology, to be quite honest, that you would conduct yourselves as elected members. You would let people sit in, and sit in a conference, first you got to chase them down, and then, after you chase them down, they don't even show up. So, while I, I get that we have to change the dynamics on the council, we also have to hold the people that's responsible accountable. And that also begins with the two liaisons, who, again, have not said anything about what's been going on, and the fact that they did what they did today. You're owed an answer, we are owed an answer, the city is owed an answer. They can't continue to keep saying, "Oh, I didn't know," or, "We don't understand." It's your job to understand, because you're the appropriating body, and you fund our schools. So, if you don't understand, if you don't know how things are supposed to work, and if you're not savvy enough to ask the questions that need to be asked, not only on your side, but if I have a question, I get it both sides, so I can make an informed decision.
Correct.
So, if you're not making an informed decision based off of the information you're given, then you don't need to sit in those council seats. You don't deserve to sit in those council seats.
When he speak, you know all seven of them is going to say?
Thank you for coming.
Yep.
Right. And Chairman Parent, that's what I was going to ask. I know we have a news reporter that's watching it live, but what is the actual media action plan?
Dr. Bracy, on, he and I Tuesday night, we've talked about it, after I speak, I'm, I'm sure that there's, there will be a reporter there. And then, then I don't know whether Lauren, we can work with Lauren to get 3:10 and 13 to be there. And if they, if they do come, then Dr. Bracy and I will do what we've done in years past, we will go on camera, and we will let, we will let the public know what this City Council is doing, and what the City Council is placing this school board in a very dangerous financial situation.
So, I guess we're...
That's the plan.
Right, that's the plan, but why are we waiting until Tuesday?
Well, Lauren might want to speak to...
We're not.
We're not waiting. She's got a, she's got a plan. I mean, she's got a plan and a letter, and it's going to be delivered.
The meeting is just Tuesday where they speak.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we got a...
All this just happened.
When we want to know the plan?
Yeah.
We want to know the plan.
Can we go into a legal closed session?
We need to go into a closed session, so Mr. Meekins can advise us.
Is that a closed?
It's not a closed. They don't want to discuss it.
We have to go in closed session to...
Because someone mentioned something about a lawsuit, so that, that has to be...
Oh, okay, let's go on closed.
Okay, yeah. Counselor? Are we legal?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we legal?
To go closed session?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I don't see why you can't.
We did, we did discuss legal action.
Can you...
Legal action.
If you're, what you're going to be going into closed session is a paragraph...
Legal action.
Eight, seven, or eight of the, which is for consultation with counsel.
I move that we go into closed session for legal, with legal counsel, with the, the correct section, section, point, section.
Let me, let me be clear.
Advice of our attorney.
Let me be clear, I'm happy to go into closed session, discuss with you, but I don't have a plan.
But we want to make sure that, that legally, we, we are discussing what we can discuss, and what we shouldn't be discussing in open session.
Well, if we go into closed session, to be clear, that we, we can, you can get consultation with counsel, this is a specific...
Legal counsel.
And that's got to say seven or eight, I can't remember which one it is.
Seven, eight, seven.
Yeah, eight, seven. Eight, seven. Can go into, for discussion of matters with counsel that should not be, or that would be prejudicial to the client to be discussed in public. But we can't discuss general matters about how we will respond, or what actions we would take. We're talking about legal matters. I don't, I don't want us to use that umbrella to have a, an invalid discussion about what, what we can have. Am I making myself clear? Am I making any sense at all?
Yeah.
I feel like I'm stammering a little bit, but I'm happy to go to closed session, I'm happy to give you the legal advice I can, but it should be limited to the legal advice.
It doesn't fit that agenda, I don't think.
Okay, so...
Okay, well Doug Brice can tell them.
Right, so if, if Dr. Bracy has a plan, he's the one that...
He's working on it. He's working on it, believe me, he's working on it, and with Lauren, believe me. There will be a letter that will be delivered in the morning that addresses this to the City Council.
And I would like to make it clear, the risk management fund, isn't it for employees' insurance, workman's comp?
It's insurance. Health insurance.
You can't spend it on anything, which is, so why wouldn't we try to replenish before our employees?
And we're trying.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to be clear.
Okay. Are we all clear about what we talked about tonight? So, if you're called by any member of the City Council, that you're clear about what you understand, because what we've told you is facts. We've given you the facts.
All right. Mr. Chairman, if I could add one thing, I do not have a plan, but if you would ask me to, I will be glad to investigate a plan and report back to you if there is any legal options.
Well, I mean, I, I think we've been down this road before, asking about the legality of, of money, and, and we always come back to the encumbrance issue, and then we get into the...
The only thing I'm worried about is whether the City Attorney should be...
Of the encumbrances, how many days.
Going to court.
Should be in charge of our fund. It is, it is in the nature of a trust fund, and whether or not that trust fund, being managed by a separate entity, by an attorney in a separate entity, is valid under typical ERISA-type laws, where there are fiduciary obligations imposed for handling funds such as these. So, I don't know how that's been arranged, but I'd be glad to investigate it if that's a request.
Can I ask the question? Is there, how do we get out of the joint risk management? How do we get out of having City Council manage our, our risk management? I mean, did we have an option to go into it?
They signed an agreement, the City Manager and Dr. Bracy. They're managing our risk management.
That's the 40s, that's the law that's older than me?
Right.
Yeah, but that's where the funds go, because of that 45-year old.
Right. We had to establish an agreement of how...
How it would operate.
Right.
How we could get our money done.
Exactly.
Right. How we could get our money done.
Can I ask one more thing?
Sure.
Because isn't part of risk management funding our employees' money?
Yes.
Yes.
That is being handled or managed by somebody that is outside of our jurisdiction?
Yes.
So, is there a legal question there that I'm missing?
He's going to research that.
ERISA.
Well, we are not, as a governmental entity, we are not strictly subject to ERISA laws.
Okay.
But there are parallels.
Good point.
Okay.
Well, is it possible that you could look into what you said about an attorney handling the funding?
So, I could look into things.
All right, that's my board member report. Do we have any other reports, the board members?
I would just like to say thank you, Mr. Falk. I know I joke about your hair, it would be silver by now, so I just, I understand to a point, to a degree, of what you guys have gone through, and I don't want to imagine it for you. I'm just going to say thank you. Thank you for doing what you do, and thank you for, for hanging with us in Portsmouth, because not only does it make, we talk about teacher and teacher retention, and can, and trying to manage what the classroom is, but at the same time, there are pressures in there, from the outside, that are put on our central office as well. So, with that, I want to say thank you for being patient and being professional, because I know at times you, you hit that point. So, between you and your staff, which is like two people, but you and your staff that are handling this for us, my sincere thank you to you and to them for, for keeping it above board, and keeping it transparent, and maintaining professionalism at all times.
Well, I thank you, and I thank this board, Dr. Bracy, as well as my colleagues, because, you know, it's a team effort to go through this, and it comes from all areas of this organization, especially when you're talking general funds, risk management. So, I appreciate the help that, and the support that you guys give us, and especially as we're bringing things forward, to ask the questions, to try to understand all of these things that are not easy to understand. So, I appreciate it as well.
Right. Board members, do you have any, anybody would like to give any report, committee reports, Mr. Falk?
I just want to give a quick shout-out to Churchland High School and Norfolk High School. Churchland made it to the regional championship, and Norfolk made it to the semifinals. Also, to Brighton Elementary School, they had a, a tailgate party on a Friday night, and they had a lot of people, they had a lot of parents, so they, they're getting a lot of engagement at the home school. I couldn't believe that many people was there on a Friday night after 6:00.
Wonderful. Okay.